Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, April 18th, 2011. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved into.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, I would like to read a proclamation in honor of Donate Life Month. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life, and whereas more than 110,000 men, women, and children await life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplants, of which nearly 3,200 reside in Georgia, and whereas the critical donor shortage remains a public health crisis as a new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every 11 minutes, while an average of 18 people die daily due to the lack of available organs, and whereas donating life through organ tissue and eye donation is the ultimate act of generosity and kindness citizens can perform, and whereas 86,827 citizens of Henry County have already registered their decision to give the gift of life at donatelifegorgia.org, and now therefore be it proclaimed that April 2011 is Donate Life Month in Henry County, Georgia, during which time we honor all those who have made the decision to give the gift of life, focus attention on the extreme need for organ, eye, and tissue donation, and encourage all residents to consider the gift of transplantation and register their intent at donatelifegorgia.org this 18th day of April 2011, the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And at this time, we have someone coming forward to accept the proclamation, and if you could step forward and if you would like to say a few words before we present this to you? Would you like to say a few words right there? Good morning.
Well, I'm, I live in Henry County.
Yes.
And I myself received a double transplant nine years ago, and that's why I'm doing this, and that's why I want to thank you so much to be supportive to this, because organ donation is just such a big thing, and many people don't know enough about it.
And what is your name?
Heidi Taylor.
Okay. We appreciate you being here this morning to accept the proclamation, and we'll meet you here at the stairs. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing Industry Appreciation Week. Whereas a strong diversified economic base is critical to Henry County's future, and whereas Henry County's varied industries are comprised of numerous Fortune 500 companies and others whose operations here are essential building blocks for our vitality and economic success as a community, and whereas these industries continue to contribute to our citizens' quality of life through the creation of quality jobs, the innovation of new products and technologies, and the steadfast community service and involvement of these corporations and their employees, and whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners hereby joins the Henry County Development Authority and the Henry County Chamber of Commerce in honoring the revolutionary advances these industries have made in both their products and processes, celebrating their resilient spirit and recognizing the sustained economic impact of manufacturing and industry in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of April 25th, 2011 shall be known as Henry County Industry Appreciation Week to coincide with the governor's statewide proclamation of Georgia Manufacturing Appreciation Week. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its appreciation for the vital contributions these industries have made and continue to make in our community each and every day this 18th day of April 2011, the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And I believe we have Leah from the Development Authority that's going to come forward, and if y'all would like to say a few words this morning.
Well, on behalf of the Development Authority and the Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you Chairman Mathis and the entire Board of Commissioners, just for your continuous support of our existing industries. Oftentimes, the new industry gets all the attention, and we want to take this time to celebrate our existing industries because we realize that they're even more important. They've already chosen Henry County as their home. So again, on behalf of the Development Authority and Chamber of Commerce, our board member here today, Charles Smith, we just want to thank you for your continued support.
If y'all would like to step over here, we'll make the presentation. Moving on to public safety, the first item is a resolution requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding to join the Flint Judicial Drug Task Force. Our presenter is Chief Keith Nichols of the Police Department, exhibit number one. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I come for you today to ask you for approval of a memorandum of understanding for the Henry County Police Department to join the Flint Judicial Drug Task Force. Since the inception of the Police Department and implementation in June 7th, 1991, Henry County Police Department has always had a narcotics division. What that narcotics division did, they investigated crimes of illegal narcotics and also vice. Up until 2003, 2004, we were also tasked with investigating those similar crimes in the cities of McDonough, Locust Grove, and also Hampton. At that time, in 2004, the cities decided to start their own drug task force. And what that meant was, is that Henry County would investigate any of those types of crimes in unincorporated Henry County, and the drug task force would investigate those crimes in the cities of McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton. And what that created, it created a little confusion because a crime might start out in the cities, those cities I just mentioned, and roll over into the county, and when that happened, the cities would have to call the county and notify the county what was going on, and vice versa. A crime might start out in the county and then roll over into the city. So there was a little bit of confliction going on there. Well, in 2010, the sheriff was asked, Sheriff McBrer was asked to join that Flint Judicial Task Force, and he did. He supplied three personnel to that unit. And we still operated under the same auspices that we had been, as I just described. Well, about the end of 2010, I was approached by Chief Dorsey, McDonough Police Department, Sheriff McBrer, the sheriff here, and also Chuck Spahas, the solicitor, and they suggested that Henry County Police Department join that drug task force. They had me to several of their meetings. Actually, I've been to about seven meetings, and I've been very impressed with how the task force has ran, and that's why I'm coming forward to you. I think it's time that we join in unison with this drug task force, and there are many different positives or advantages for it. I'm going to ask you to sign the memorandum of understanding this morning.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
One question or comment. And Chief, in the agreement, there is an opt-out clause of 30 days to where any party can withdraw or get out within 30 days, and assets that they have in would be distributed back to the original holder. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Holder, that's correct. And what we tried to do is, we tried to model this memorandum of understanding with the MCS, which stands for Marietta Cobb Smyrna Drug Task Force. They've been in operation almost 30 years, but what you're alluding to is a 30-day opt-out clause, and that's where any member of this task force with 30-day notice can say, "We no longer wish to participate in this unit," and they're allowed to opt out.
Mr. Alata?
The addendum, Chief, that's number three, that Police Department agreed to match funds to establish operations account, one-time injection.
Yes, sir.
What is that amount?
It's the ballpark of around $25,000, and because both units are approximately the same size, and the drug task force is running on a, give or take, you know, a couple thousand dollars, about $25,000, and with the merging of the two units, we're going to merge that money, and it's, I don't know the exact figure right now, but it's in the ballpark of about 20,000, 20,000, $20,000 to $25,000, and that's what we normally keep in those operating accounts.
And that would come out of your, this year's budget that you're working within?
Pardon me?
Would that money come from your budget today?
It's already in the account right now. So we use that to buy illegal narcotics and the likes with that. So it's, and we just had a changeover in the commander, and he just did a tally of that money, and it's in the ballpark of around $20,000.
Makes sense. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Bowman?
Chief, didn't that money also seize funds?
That's where it ultimately comes out of.
So it's really not a, it's really not a budget item per se, because it's seized funds, so I mean, it's.
And that's.
It is a budget, but it's not from the general fund.
It is, it is a budget, but you're correct, that's not out of the general fund.
That's good. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions? Not, you have before you a resolution that authorizes the participation and also authorizes the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to rescind a bid award for EMS equipment and to approve award of the bid to a different vendor. Our presenter is Division Chief Brad Johnson of the Fire Department, exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Last month, I approached the board and got approval of the purchase stretchers for our new ambulances. The company we purchased from, Capital Supply Company, who had the most receptive low bid, could not produce the item once the award was received or given to them. Our recommendation is go to the next receptive bidder, which we Striker Manufacturing, for an amount of $61,516.40.
Any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
And this very well. Brad, this may be a question more for our purchasing department. They were deemed to be, I suppose they were deemed to be responsive to the, because they were low, and then, of course, it came back to us, and we approved it.
Yes, sir.
And then, and Capital Food Supply?
Yes, sir.
That.
It raised questions. We actually, before we awarded the first bid, we went to them and said, "Can you supply this?" And they assured us they could. After the purchaser was let, they came back so they could supply it, they could not provide a warranty for the equipment.
Oh.
So actually, they were shot, they were just drop shipping. They, computer network finding bids online and actually doing governmental bids, just kind of drop shipping, and they were not a distributor for that particular stretcher. We used a Striker stretcher.
Right.
So the Striker company would not warranty their equipment if they drop ship it just to Henry County.
And that probably be something we should probably have our purchasing department look at, so that we don't.
Yes, sir.
Get into the same situation.
It's becoming more prevalent, I think, as we do more with the economy like it is.
That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid for the purchase of EMS equipment to Striker Medical and rescinding Resolution Number 11-51. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Alata, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Okay, you also have the next item, which is a resolution requesting award of a request for proposal to purchase two new Class A fire engines. That's going to be exhibit number four.
Yes, ma'am, we worked, we're purchasing, sent out a request proposal for the delivery of two Class A fire engines. The request basically submitted, or we want to submit it, was what they have on stock now, using price and delivery date as our main criteria for selection. We had three companies submit proposals, Fireline, Ferreira Fire, 10-8, with 10-8 submitting three different proposals. The most receptive of that was Ferreira Fire Equipment for the purchase of two units within 90 days of the purchase order being submitted for $569,132. The next proposal from 10-8, the trucks that were already demo trucks have already been sold since that proposal was turned in, so it does make Ferreira the most receptive of the two. These trucks are demo type or in production this time, so that's how we get the delivery date quicker. We will have to add a few more things in loose equipment, which will be more cost-effective for us to actually sub out our loose equipment and have it delivered with a truck.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Alata?
I noticed on the comments on the Ferreira Fire, 2007 EPA compliant.
Yes, sir.
Is that an issue? That should be 2010?
Yes, sir, did the 2010 compliant require urea system, basically a diesel exhaust fluid to be added to that? So you have to have fuel and your diesel exhaust. The diesel exhaust fluid is about $5 average per gallon, and you use a couple, it uses an eight-gallon reservoir for every tank of diesel fuel you use. The manufacturers, what they did is bought up in 2007, eight, the motor, compliant motors, crate motors, and they're still building what motors they have left over that do not have to beat the 2010 standard, because the motor is a '07, '08 model motor. So these motors are the last ones, or some of the last ones available, that don't have to have the extra fluid, which is about a $25,000 reduction in cost per truck in the initial build. Will not have to have the updated compliance.
And we won't have to bring them up to that?
No, sir, we will not have to bring them up.
So they're exempt grandfathered or whatever?
The engines that are, drive trains that are produced after 2010 have to have the urea. And we work with Jody with this, and what's the best for us and mostly cost-effective and.
You mentioned there are some additional items that would have to be added to these, and I noticed the bids are close, if you would, in timeframe, and two of them, I think.
Yes, sir.
What are those dollars that you're talking about? Just approximate tens of thousands or hundreds?
Yeah, basically, on the engine at Ferreira with supplies, we had to add the generator system. Looked at maybe $10,000 additional dollars just for that truck that's in production now that didn't have it outlined as part of their spec truck. And then our loose equipment, radios, hose, thermal imaging cameras, stuff like that, we have to buy with any of these trucks, we would have to purchase with that.
And with that addition, that still would make this bid cheaper even?
It would, it would. This would make this truck cheaper. The as-built truck, if we went out and had a new truck built and had it from beginning that wasn't online, would have to add another $50,000 to $75,000 to this price here. So this is the most economical way to go right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Holder?
Chief, in this bid price, and I think it's important for the people to know that we're looking at about $300,000 per truck. Each one would require the $18,000 additions.
Yes, sir. This truck, this right here is just a truck. Just a truck.
Remember that the $284,566 requires an additional $18,000.
Just the, yeah, just for, that's just this right here. This $18,000 on the bottom, if you look at 10-8, the truck that was actually lower in price on the chart, it did not have all this equipment on it that this truck that we're actually purchasing already has it on it. So the price that is included in Ferreira. Now, it's going to take at least probably another $100,000 in equipment, and that's typical. Our last trucks we bought in 2006 was $426,000 turnkey.
That's, that's, that's the point that I mentioned.
Yes.
And that's one of the people need to know, just how expensive fire engines are.
They're very expensive.
Very expensive pieces of equipment, and just wanted to make that point clear.
We're going to try our best, Mr. Holder, to hit that price of 2006. I think we can come close to hitting that price on turnkey in 2011.
Any other questions? Mr. Alata?
How would you describe the age-year fleet presently in far as the replacements and next year's budget?
Our agent, we do have an aging fleet. We have some of our engines in service now. They're 1995 models at Station 4. We have our reserve fleets. The trucks that, these trucks we'll be replacing out of our reserve fleet are 19, oh gosh, 19, 1990 models with over 200, almost 300,000 miles on them. The problem having the trucks now that are no longer service, we actually refertilized them about five years ago, the bed of the truck, the body of the fire truck is actually sinking down in the frame, and so DOT maintenance is really, cannot really repair them any longer, and the cost benefit is, we passed it several years ago. But we do have an aging fleet, Mr. Alata, and it's, we did request, in our replacement plan, there is a request for additional as each year continues. I will say our fleet maintenance personnel are doing a great job keeping our fleet in the best condition they can and the best it's ever been.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the award for the purchase of the fire engines to Ferreira Fire Apparatus in the amount of $569,132, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Alata, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of the revanding services agreement with Harris Corporation for the 800 MHz rebanding project. Our presenter is Susan Clegg, Assistant Director for Emergency Communications, and that's exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning. This is the final contract in our reconfiguration project. In 2004, the FCC mandated that all users of a frequency band in the 800 frequencies change frequencies, and this was because of interference that was being caused by the cell phone towers and users of the frequency. So everyone had to move down 15 MHz on their frequencies, and this resulted in this project. Everything that we have has to be reconfigured, all of our site equipment, all of our terminal radios, mobiles, portables. Everything has to be reconfigured to that lower band, that 15 MHz lower band. And on March 14th, the board approved the frequency reconfiguration agreement with Sprint and XSTEL. That agreement basically laid out the methodology to get this project done. This agreement with Harris, Harris is our radio system provider, and Harris will provide the work, the labor, to actually complete the task that are identified in the frequency reconfiguration agreement. There is no cost to the county at all. Sprint will pay the cost for all the reconfiguration. That was an agreement that they worked out with the FCC. They got some frequency bands and relinquished some frequency bands, and so we are actually going on to those that they relinquished. But Sprint is paying the cost. We will also be reimbursed for any time our employees spend during the course of this project, any hours that they spend, and that will compute to about $140,000 that we will be reimbursed for. So this is the final contract for Harris to do the work.
How long do you anticipate it will take to complete it, and will there be any type of disruption in service during that time period?
We're hoping to start in June. It should take about eight months to complete the process. The methodology that is laid out in the frequency reconfiguration agreement, we worked on that for quite a long time to make sure that any interference or any interruptions in service would be minor. The actual work is going to be done between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM in the mornings, which is our slowest period as far as radio traffic is concerned, and that's how we worked it out, so.
Well, I know even the least amount of disruption could create an issue for some of our officers that would lose radio contact potentially while on call. How will that be mitigated? Will you know specific areas where that's taking place so that some safety measures can be put in place to protect our officers and the public?
Yes. What we're going to do is, the new frequencies will be programmed into every radio. So they will have one set of old frequencies and one set of new. And they're only going to do this, we have eight channels in our system, they will do two at a time. So we are not expecting any interruptions or any, any problems, but if we do, we do have some mitigating factors in the contract that will allow them to go in, put things back like they were, and that will take care of the interference or the problem. Like I said, we've gone over this for many months to try to work and make sure that everything will work properly and, and there's not any, any problems.
Will this reconfiguration improve the gaps that are currently in the Fairview area?
It should. There's, there are some problems that are taking place now, and it's just a matter of the system being 10 years old. And at the time the system was put in, the traffic in the frequencies was not as heavy. Now there's more users on the waves, the frequency waves. So we pick up that. We have come up with a solution for that in the interim, to go in and put some filters at the radio sites that will filter out some of the noise that's coming through now. But as far as the coverage, we will not get any more interference from the cell towers when we complete this reconfiguration project. They will be far enough away on the frequency band to where they will not interfere with public safety.
If, if it doesn't work, because you said it should, is there a Plan B to ensure that the Fairview area could, would be okay in terms of filling that coverage gap?
Okay, you're talking about the interim situation I talked about a while ago, that it should work? Or the rebanding itself?
Well, I understand that there are some gaps in the Fairview area where police don't have communication.
Yes. That has already been addressed. We, that was the first area that our radio service providers checked into. We got, I got all of the cellular providers out here. They checked their equipment to make sure that it wasn't them. And then our service provider, Loudon Corporation, went in and checked. It is, it's an amplifier, an antenna amplifier, and what it does is it takes in all of the traffic and processes it through the system. It's a wide, a wide-band system, and it lets a lot of information in, if that makes sense. It lets a lot of things come into the system, and they have gone back in and put a filter on it. That will, that will work. I've not had any complaints in the Fairview area, and this has been on there for three weeks. I've not had any complaints in that area.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the execution of the rebanding services agreement with Harris Corporation, and I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to Technology Services, we have a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase Cisco Systems Software Materials and Services. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Director of Technology Services. Exhibit number five. Good morning.
Good morning. This is basically a bid to renew our contract for Cisco products and services. Cisco provides us with all of our networking equipment, routers, switches, things of this nature that sort of on the backend make the network work. They also provide all of our telephone equipment for the county, all of your desk phones and some of the mobile phones. The way we do this is we basically put this out for bid, and we asked for a percentage discount off of the normal list price for all of Cisco's products and services. And this provides the most flexibility moving forward. And I, we believe also a, a deeper discount because you're really giving a company an opportunity for all of our business for the, the period of contract, which is for one year. And we've asked that that be renewable for up to three years, in which we'll, we'll reexamine it again. Be happy to take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions pertaining to this item? Okay, if not, you have before you a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of Cisco products and services for the Technology Services Department. I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0 with Mr. Stamey being absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to SPOS, the first item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to design, build one storage building at Heritage Park. Our presenter is Ron Burkhalter, Capital Projects Director. Exhibit number six.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Proposals were solicited to design, build, construct one storage building at Heritage Park in McDonough. The initial proposals that we sent out were over budget. We revised the scope of work and resubmitted the invitation to bids to the responsive bidders. The revised scope of work on this storage building consists of a building that's 120 feet long by 40 foot wide, a total of 11 bays. 10 of the bays in the storage building are 10 foot by 20 foot, and there's one bay that's 20 foot by 20 foot. We had to add alternate in the bid for two of the 10 by 20 bays in the storage building to be insulated and conditioned. Four bidders responded to the proposals. The staff, our staff recommended and reviewed the proposals, and we checked all the references. Staff recommends awarding the base bid plus the add alternate to D's Construction Company of Swanage, Georgia in the amount of $102,938.45. Funding for this is available in the SPOS III Heritage Park account. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Aletta?
Ron, it indicates in here that the initial proposals, maybe you said it also, were over budget. What, what is the budget?
$109,000.
$109?
The original building was 160 foot by 20 foot. We reduced the footprint of the building to get it within budget.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Holder?
Ron, insulated and conditioned, I understand possibly insulated. What, what about the conditioned? You talking about air conditioning?
Yes, sir.
What is the purpose in the air conditioning?
There's a need on the park and rec for concession, candy bars, food, food that they use in the concession facilities, okay, of having a conditioned area for storing at the, and, and park and rec in this is just not for Heritage Park. They're going to use this conditioned space for quite a few of the concession stands in the county.
What did they, the air conditioning, what did that add to it? Was that the 4,200 or?
Yes, sir.
That was the 4,200? Okay, now, I know Commissioner Aletta asked about the original budget. But in, in that Heritage Park, there was an original 180, $190,000 pole barn that was put into there. 185. That was close, wasn't it? 185,000 for a pole barn to house the dirt that I had, certainly had a problem with. This would be something that would be much more useful to, to everything that goes on in the entire recreational systems.
And just to clarify the, the total budget, Commissioner Stamey, in, in the budget, we also paid for the LED sign that's at Heritage Park right now, came out of that $185,000 that you were talking about from the previous. The other thing that this is going to do for us, right now park and rec is, they're up to 13 pods right now that we're renting for storing materials in. This should be a savings, not should, this will be a savings to the general fund, anywhere from 10 to 11,000 dollars a year. We'll be able to get rid of those pods, and we'll be able to store everything in this, this facility here. I wanted everybody to be aware of that we're building a building, but we're also getting rid of some storage facilities that we have that we're paying rent on, on a monthly basis too. So, thank you.
Mr. Aletta?
Ron, I, I wrote down when you said the size of the building is 120 by 40, or is it 120 by 20?
120 by 20.
Okay, so it was reduced from 160 by 20 to 120 by 20?
Correct.
So, you knocked out about 800 square feet or almost 25% of it. If the original proposal, proposal was for 160, was there a need for that? And you're going to be still short space? Or was that just trying to build some extra space in for future needs or when you originally had the original proposal?
That was just building additional space for future needs. The, the building that we, this building that, that we're proposing right now will take care of park and rec's needs today, of the pods that we're using.
And the other 800 square feet that you're relinquishing to make it fall within the budget, is that going to be an issue a year from now or two years from now?
Unless there's, there's additional, and I'm speaking for park and rec here, unless there's additional needs at Heritage, in the storage facility or in the pods that they have right now is all the chairs, the, the tables, everything that it takes for setting up the, the arena, as an example, okay? Unless there's an expansion to what we have out at Heritage, I don't foresee any more space that's needed.
I just don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish, as they say, sitting here trying to save 10 or 20,000 dollars, shrinking the size of the building, and then a year from now come back and say we need to build another building because we needed the 800 square feet that you eliminated to make the budget. That's all reason I'm asking the question.
Any other questions? Mr. Bowman?
Is, is this building currently shown on the master plan?
Yes.
And it's in that location? This building also, is it designed in such a way that it can be extended, quote unquote, and still be within the master plan?
Yes. Commissioner, the, the, the original was the 160 on the master plan for paving the parking lot, we're putting the curb and gutter in. On the original, it was the 160 foot of the, the larger footprint, okay? So, we're, we're just shortening up the building. In the future, if there is a need for an addition, again, the master plan has allotted for that.
Any other questions? If not, you have a resolution before you awarding the design build construct of the storage building at Heritage Park in the amount of $102,938.45 to D's Construction Incorporated. And Mr. Stamey, I'll look to you for a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a change order for the Simpson Mill Road project. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOS Transportation Project Director. Exhibit number seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Simpson Mill Road is designated as SPOS III Transportation Improvement Project. Staff is requesting approval of a Henry County Water and Sewer Authority change order in the amount of $94,350.14 for rock blasting on Simpson Mill. This was necessary to install a new water line that had to be relocated due to the construction of the widening and paving of Simpson Mill. I will take any questions.
Any Board Member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If, Mr. Bowman?
Rocky, this is a, a change order for unforeseen conditions, correct?
That is, that is correct. We, we encounter rock under the road, and it was accounted on the project. We did have that line item for the construction of the road, but we'd never checked that far out where the water authority.
Into the right of way. We didn't, we covered the road part, but we really didn't cover the right of way on the rock.
Correct.
Did we have a rock clause in there so that we could verify and keep up with that contract?
We had it in our construction, but not on, not on the water authority, and that's why we have this change order. But I think in the future, what we're going to be doing is if, if we encounter rock on the right of way, we're going to, I mentioned this to the water authorities, so they can do their, also their investigation for the, for the shoulders beyond our depth.
Yeah, was the rock clause though, was it a, was it a quantities?
It was a quantity, yes.
Okay, so it, we were still covered under the, we weren't covered, we were, we, we were able to quantify the amount of rock. That's where I'm going with that.
We were able to quantify the rock for the road itself.
Right.
But not for a depth for the water authority. Because we don't go, we don't build a road that deep. But, but yes, we did have a quantify for, for the road itself.
Okay, so, I mean, I mean, it's an unforeseen condition, so it's, it's a fair change order. Were we able to, were we able to make quantities on the amount of rock that was taken? Did our contractor take out the rock for the water authority? I think that's the best question.
Actually, the, the water authority started first on the relocation, and we actually used the, the contract, or our contractor used the sub, like the water used to do our road.
So, the quantities were correct, and we were able to?
On both, on both ends, yes, sir.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, there lies before you a resolution approving the change order for the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority for Simpson Mill Road. Mr. Aletta, this lies in your district. I'll look to you for a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Aletta, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a budget amendment transferring funds from Pullen Road to Oakland Road. That's exhibit number eight.
Yes, Madam Chair, Oakland Road is also designated as SPOS III Transportation Project, and there's a need to have a budget amendment in the amount of $260,000 to cover construction and related costs. Funding for this budget amendment is available on the SPOS III Pullen Road account.
This is simply transferring funds from a District II project to a District II project?
That is correct, and there's some savings on Pullen Road, and we're just transferring those savings to, to Oakland Road.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Aletta?
One of the things, I was just doing a calculation last night on this, but the new bid for the construction of Oakland at the $1,420,000?
Correct.
On 1.35 miles versus the Pullen, which is 1,678, there's about a 12% increase in cost per mile, if I take it that way. And if you could just address that, please.
Yes, sir. Most likely, the, the increase is going to be on the asphalt. When, when we bid out Pullen was over, over a year, close over a year and three months ago, it was back in 2009, 2009, when we bid that project. And we didn't start construction until early 2010. So, due to the increase in petroleum, that's where you see that increase on asphalt. Clearing and grading uses a lot of, you know, diesel equipment and all that, so that's, that's why you, you have that increase.
So, we're probably lucky it's only 12% for what's happened with the petroleum prices the last year.
And if you look at it, the, the price, the road is, I believe it's 1.3?
It's about a million, billion fifty-two per mile versus 932.
Correct. It's roughly a million per mile, and back in '06, '05, '06, that's what we were running. We were running about a million. And then back in '08, we had a little dip. It started coming around 800, 900 a mile. So, it kind of fluctuates, and it, it's due to, to the economy and, you know, petroleum prices.
As far as the estimates for other roads in District II, maybe the others, are the estimates that are in SPOS right now also going to be affected in future construction for the estimates that were created when SPOS was put in place?
Most likely. We did have, this, I think, one of the first ones that we see actually have to go to another project of, of savings to, to compensate the, on the runs or the overruns on, on, on a bid. But everything that we bid so far, except this one, we've actually been under. So, we'll have some more in the future, and, and we'll just see how, how they come. But it, it may go up, it may go down, but 12% is not really that bad in the grand scheme, I guess.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Holder?
When is this road scheduled to, to begin?
If it's, if it's approved today, Commissioner, we'll probably start within two weeks. We're actually going to have a pre-construction this Thursday. We just got to turn in the NOI. 14 days later, we can start construction, so we're looking at the first of May.
The reason for my question, Southeastern Site Development is the apparent low bidder.
That's correct, sir.
And they are currently have South Bethany Road.
That's correct.
And they're not complete with it.
That's correct. The, what the plan is, and if you've been out there, they've been moving along on this one much better than, than the, the other of South Bethany. And the plan is for, within a month over there, they should be finished with the grading and also with the GAB. So, by the time we get a, award this one, and they do the clearing, they, they'll, they'll be some, most likely, the clearing on this one. So, by the time the clearing is completed and utilities relocation is completed, it'll be the time for Southeastern to actually come in and start grading. So, it's roughly about two months before they can, they can go back in. And, and within two months, we should have South Bethany paved.
If you feel comfortable with it, you know we've run into things where contractors would be awarded more contracts than they had equipment and personnel to complete, and we had delays in projects. So, that's the reason for my question.
I, I feel comfortable in this one, just, just by seeing the, the progress we've seen in, in South Bethany. And they've been out there working Saturdays. They were out there this weekend putting some erosion measurements, and, and they're right there, just close to Philadelphia right now grading. So, we got GAB all the way from Cohen to Seabolt, and they should be putting some GAB over their box cover this week, if weather permits, so.
Any other questions?
The issues we have on Rocky Creek right now, what's the timeframe of completion on this?
On, on which one?
On Oakland.
On Oakland. We gave them 10 months for completion. We will be closing the road as well also during certain times because we have to build some box covers out there. There's two locations, so we'll just have to do one at a time. There's, Nell Road is also intersects this road, kind of two thirds of the way. So, there'll be a detour route, and we'll advise, put up warning signs a week in advance prior to the closing. And we'll, hopefully, we're coming into the summer, hopefully, we won't have much rain as we had the, early this year. So, hopefully, it'll work out much better on, on our road closings for, for Oakland.
The inconvenience, we had a lot of issues with people regarding the detours and calls that we had. Do you feel the detours on Oakland will be less of an issue?
I, I would think it would be less. It's, it's, it's not a heavy traffic road right now, so hopefully, it won't, won't have as much inconvenience to the public as, as some other roads that we had.
Any other questions? The resolution before you is a budget amendment to transfer funds from Pullen Road to Oakland Road in the amount of $260,000. And Mr. Aletta, I'll look to you for a motion.
One other thing to state, and that is, thank you for the extra money on Pullen to be able to pull over here. So, thank you for the word that, controlling the project there, so. But I'll so moved.
Same. Motion to approve is there second? Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The next item is the resolution requesting the award of the bid for the construction and the widening and paving of Oakland Road, and that's exhibit number nine.
Yes, as mentioned before, we, Southeastern Site Development is the low bidder. We did receive 12 sealed bids, and they were reviewed, and staff recommends the low bidder of Southeastern Site Development in the amount of $1,420,501. the low bidder of Southeastern Site Development in the amount of $1,420,501.70, and with the previous resolution, we do have the funding available on this project to complete.
You know, I was really surprised at the bid, I, I expected Oakland Road to come in far higher than this, and I know that's, a million four is a lot of money, and this certainly doesn't include the right of way, but that, that was a, that road is a very difficult road to, to move, maneuver around and, and to get that paved, I expected a higher bid, so.
Yes.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Issue one, as we had in the previous one with the rock, do we feel pretty comfortable we're not going to have this problem?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should have this problem on this project, a lot of them are fields, so we should be okay.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution to award the construction bid to Southeastern Site Development in the amount of $1,420,501.70, and I'll, I'll look to you, Mr. Aletta, for a motion. Motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to financial services, the first item is a resolution requesting award of a request for proposals for appraiser services required for the neighborhood stabilization program. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, and that's exhibit number 10.
Good morning, Board, Madam Chair and Board. We are actually going to issue three different awards this morning. The first one's on the appraisal services for the neighborhood stabilization program. One of the reasons why we brought these three components back up is we've been awarded money in the NSP Three, and we got to basically set up people to do the work in NSP Three, too, so we felt it was a good time to just go back and send out an RFP for appraisal services, home inspections, and asset managers for NSP One and NSP Three. And this first one you have before you is the appraisal services. We had four different, we sent out an RFP and had four people answer the RFP, and we had MH Biggers, JTLH Real Estate Consultants, and Philson Real Estate Appraisal Services. They submitted the most responsive bids, and we would like to award a contract to these three vendors to do the appraisal work for the county in the NSP Program One and Three.
Any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the appraisal services required for NSP, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a request for proposals for home inspection services required for the NSP Program, thus exhibit number 11.
Yes, ma'am, in each home we purchased, we have to have somebody come in there and inspect the home outside of the asset manager who's going to do the construction, to make sure that we are doing every piece of the rehab work that is, that we're needing to do. One other thing that we're adding to the home inspection services this year is we will be doing a final inspection with the Henry County Board of Commissioners Building Department, just to make sure that we meet all the criteria that is stated in the RFP and stated by DCA and HUD. We had three vendors answer the RFP, one, one of the vendors was non-responsive, and we would like to award the bid to the most responsive bidder, which is APD Solutions. They came in with a total service of $975 per home, that's a $450 initial inspection, where they create a packet that says, these are the problems, and these are what we're going to fix, and then there are three interim inspections, where if they have to come back, they've put in a price for that, and a final inspection, and so the, the average, or the, the maximum per home is $975, if they are not needed on those interim inspections, they won't receive that fee.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
I've got a question.
Mr. Stamey?
Like, the second one that was on the list, what was his price?
Second one on the list, $1,500 per home, average, and that was broken down again by the, the, they, I think it was $600 initial write-up of the house, and then additional inspections that totaled up to $1,500 on the average per house versus 975.
I guess the third one was just?
The third one sent in a, a proposal that only quoted the initial write-up, did not add any additional inspections, I mean, it was $200, $250, which, you know, did not make sense, so we sent out, we sent out a questionnaire asking, what do your cost break down per, you know, house, or how does it break down? Two of them had all their amounts included and how it broke down, the third person sent in a reply that said it would be the 250 for the first one and 100 and something for each additional one, but he didn't include that in his package, so he only had an initial 270, 275 or 250 dollar response, so there's no way he could do all that work for that amount of money.
So basically, you have a Part A and a Part B, the Part A is when he goes out and determines the amount of repairs to the property, right?
Part A is, is when he actually goes out before we even make a bid on the property, we send some, we send them out, we're looking at this property, we'll sign a contract, or a, a contract with stipulations, and we'll go out there and check that house. We've actually had four houses where we've turned down, because we found that there's too much rehab work to do, a repair in a roof or something, so we, that is what the first part is, to go out there and give a, a very thorough study of the house to make sure it's something that we will, that is something that will, will work for this program, so yes, sir, that is correct.
And the Part B, with, when the repairs were completed, he goes back and inspects that, too, is our building department involved in inspection?
That's, our building department has not been involved in the past, but we have added that into the future. It, it's not only, we want the building department to go in there, and maybe there was something that the inspector, shouldn't be anything the inspector missed, but you know, once everything's said and done, and we want to make sure that it meets the state requirements for, to, to receive a CO, so that's why we decided to add that in to this part of the program moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Aletta, did you have a question?
In the previous approval, you selected four people, four appraisals?
Three.
Three. In this one, I know you only have two, and you did mention difference in price, why in one is there four to choose from, and then in the other, only one to choose from?
The, the, the first one with the appraisal services, we put in the RFP what we were willing to pay per appraisal, it's the exact same dollar amount. The reason why we have three to choose from is, in the RFP, some of them said it would, there's a seven-day turnaround before they could come appraise the house. If we're in a situation where we need it appraised quickly, we would be able to go to one of the other particular vendors.
You set the price, and just?
We set the price.
Who agreed it, and the second one was a bid? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution that is approving the APD solutions for home inspection services as detailed in the proposal documents, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Aletta, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The final item under financial services is a resolution requesting award of a request for proposals for asset management services required for the NSP Program, that's handout number one.
This one, we actually had 14 vendors send in bids for this particular section of the bid. This is the, this is the main person that is used for the NSP Program. These people go out and find the houses, help the county acquire the houses, they do the rehab of the houses, and then they, they will market and, and sell these houses, you know, to clients. They also deal with people who come in, who want to apply for the NSP Program, they help them work their way up through the application process, so these people do a, a lot of work in this, in this program. Like I said, we had 14 people, or 14 vendors send in applications, and we have chosen four of those vendors to, to move forward with. They are Strategic Holdings, Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity, Jewel of the South, and ABM Services and Renovations. They submitted the lowest, the most responsive bid, and these, these were evaluated on cer- certain criteria, basically the same criteria we did on the first, the first set of asset managers. The one change that we have done, or that we would request that be done, is when we, when we were building these houses in the beginning, once the house was finished being built or rehabbed, and if the house sat there for 90 days, 120 days, there were a, a cost for utilities, for maintenance of the property, and things like that, those costs were not able to be brought back into the program because we could not add it to the cost of the house, and what we've decided to do is, instead of the county paying for the utilities and the, and the, you know, the maintaining of the grasses and things like that, we want the asset manager to do that, not, and not, they're not asking reimbursement for those purposes, so to do that, we've asked to raise the acquisition and the disposition fee from $3,500 to $4,000. That way, we can include those costs into the cost of the house, and that way, come close to breaking even on every house. Other than that, we also put in there the asset manager roles and exactly what it is that they're supposed to do in the RFP package. We are going to bring each one of them into the finance department and provide them with a packet of, of, of information that's needed, required, of how the files are supposed to look. We're actually having an audit this week of our NSP Program for how our files are put together. We have had the last two of those that have been perfect, no, no questions on any of the stuff that we've been doing, and we want to make sure that we start this NSP Three part out the same way we did NSP One, and make sure that our audits come in clean, and the state of Georgia has asked that, once we complete this packet, that they'd like a copy of it, because I think they're going to use it to you, to be a, a model for all other NSP programs. I'll also add that NSP Three, we, we adopted, or sent out the application for the state of Georgia last Thursday, and you asked a question, who the other two, there was three recipients of NSP Three, there were 23 recipients of NSP One, they knocked it down to three, it was us, Cobb, and Gwinnett. So that's pretty good, if you're one of the three, and the other two are Cobb and Gwinnett, so we, we feel really good about this program, and we would like to move forward with these four asset managers, and with the change to the 4,000 from 3,500 on the acquisition disposition cost.
I'm glad to see that Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity ranks so high in, in this process. Can you explain briefly the added value we get by using this particular asset manager from the financial counseling part of it?
Yes, I can. The, our program has guidelines that DCA put, DCA and HUD, I guess they're coming from HUD, and DCA adds theirs, that we're supposed to meet. One of the things we have to do is we have to send these people to an eight-hour training class, counseling class. Habitat for Humanity's additional stuff that they do above and beyond this is, they actually have a, a classroom, I believe it's in Clayton County, where they go in and they, they spend another four hours, they've got a toilet that is cut in half, and you see a GI Joe stuck in there, and if there's a tear in the wall or sheet rocket, they kind of go over and tell people who have maybe never been homeowners before, you know, these are some of the things that you can see, and these are some of the things you can do, it's just trying to train them into, you know, better understanding of how to run a home. There's some financial classes that they also offer, and one of the things that we, we would like to do is to add that to our requirements, that they do go through this, whether they are, you know, have a house with a Habitat for Humanity, or any of our other providers, we think this is something that is a very important tool that everybody needs, and like to run those through those same classes that Habitat has.
It was, it was really nice to know that Habitat said they would be, they would be willing to offer that to all, whether they were the asset manager or not.
They're also willing to help us with asking for additional abilities to help Henry County citizens. One of the things that we've got, we've looked at is there's a, a public safety, if you qualify for an NSP home and you work in public safety, there's an additional $15,000 assistance that's out there available, so that we could try to get even more of our people into this program, and, and it's not only the public safety people, there are other mechanisms out there that, that Habitat for Humanity is using, and would like for Henry County to apply for those same things, and even try to make this program even that much more efficient and effective.
Does any board member have a question or comment, Mr. Aletta?
I know you have four to, to pick any, I don't know any of these people, other than read the names like anybody else, but one of the things I do see is that real PNS, their performance is a 90, and ABM is a 70, both out of 105, so real PNS is substantially above in performance, and the other is, ABM has a ranking of 34 out of 45 in financial stability versus, say, 45 out of 45 for real PNS, so it appears their performance and financial stability is much stronger, but on this, on the cost side, where they lose all the points, they're 60 versus 120 out of 120, so understand price is important, and you do have four, so it's not like you're going to be stuck if they can't perform, but what was the difference, I guess, in price that the points were so, so far spread?
The, the, the price mechanism that we put in place here required them to send back information on the, what they would charge, and what these people sent back was the maximum, did not break it down in any way, shape, or form as to what that they would require, and so what we did is, we looked at the people who provided the form that we were looking at would get, you know, would score higher than the other people. Some of these people on the, on the pricing didn't even send in information, and you see some non-responsive bidders, that's one of the reasons why some of those are non-responsive. Also, on the, the real PNS, they did provide a, a, a large package that did have a lot of detail in it, they're not a local, I want to say local, they're not, I think it's a national-wide firm, I think, there's a couple of national-wide firms that sent some stuff in here, but again, we couldn't, we couldn't determine as far as pricing goes, because it wasn't broken down in the, in the manner in which we had asked for it to be.
So maybe, they may have been cheaper, but the way they submitted their bid, didn't give them the opportunity, or?
The, the, the points, they were absolutely not the cheapest, they, if anything, they, they asked for the maximum money allowed by the program, and we had other people that came in and said that they would do it for much less than that, and so to us, the scoring was based on, you know, who's going to come in here and do this work for the, and, you know, have the best benefit for the county, that's one of the reasons why they were hit so hard there.
But like I said, I understand you do have three others even to pick from, so, but the, those two points, I mean, total points show that they did, but could mean something else, I guess that's all.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution which is approving the proposal for asset management services for our NSP Program, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to planning and zoning services, we have a request for approval of an ordinance adopting a new official zoning map and repealing the prior official zoning map. Our presenter is Sherry Hopson Matthews, Planning and Zoning Director, exhibit number 12.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. Ms. Chairman Mathis mentioned the request before you is an ordinance to adopt a new official zoning map. Section 10701 of the Unified Land Development Code requires that our zoning map be adopted every year as needed by the Board of Commissioners. Staff has, over the last year or so, we've had a number of requests that have come in for zoning verifications, individuals just walking in the office, wanting to verify zoning, and in a number of cases, the parcels were incorrectly delineated on the official zoning map. So over the course of the last year, staff has gone through every file in our planning and zoning office to make sure that what's on the map is actually, or actually corresponds with a zoning file. As a result of that, we actually have 123 zoning map areas that were located as a result of a zoning file. So the request before you this morning is to adopt the new official zoning map with those files that have been located. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Holder?
I really asked the other board members, I, I found a couple in mind that I questioned, and Ms. Matthews has looked, have you looked at your, the area that's your county, of your district, and if in fact, everything's okay? I mean, I found the two in mind, and I would like verification before we adopt it, as far as I'm concerned, I'm just asking the question of other board members. Have you looked at it carefully?
Any comments from board members on that? Any comments for board members on that? Mr. Bowman?
I have not looked that hard. I did, I glanced at it, but I really didn't look that hard at it, and maybe I should, as Mr. Holder's found several in his.
Well, I found a couple, and Sherri, if you'll move the map and point out the one that I found, and it's very much on the eastern side, it's, it's, it's right where she's pointing to, that is Mount Bethel Road, which many of you know, comes off Highway eighty-one East. It, as Commissioner Stamey says, pavement ends in that area at this intersection of Stroud Road, and it becomes Woodstown Road from that point on. You see two commercial zonings right there, and that's basically on a dirt road, two dirt roads, Stroud and Woodstown, right there. And Stroud to the south is paved, Mount Bethel to the west is paved. But that zoning is showing that it's commercial. I don't remember in the last fifteen years that being brought to us. Now, it's actually showing on the map, Sherri says, from nineteen ninety-three?
That is correct. We've checked.
But there's no file to show that this, this property has ever been rezoned. So, I can't imagine, I know who lives there, it's strictly residential in the area. I can't imagine how this has occurred, but if we're going to adopt a map, these are things that we need to look for to be sure that when we do make the change and adopt it, that there's areas like this that are not on the map. Because when a person comes to the county, and I contend, you can have all of the texts you want to, supporting the, the comp plan, but if a person walks in and wants to pick a piece of property and wants to know what the zoning is, they're going to go to that map, and if this person sees this is commercial, or designated on the map as commercial or residential, whatever the case might be, or what level of residential, that's what they're going to base their decision on. Not reading that text, but they're going to look at the map. So, the map is most important in identifying what the land use is for the area.
Mr. Bowman?
In recognition of that, I, I'm not sure that we shouldn't think about maybe tabling this issue and having taken, I glanced over, man, now, the fourth district is a lot different than the first district in that we're pretty well developed out, but maybe it might behoove us to take a, to table it and take a look, unless there's something that we shouldn't table it for, just to, maybe, I, I should take another look at it, I know.
Oh, absolutely, and, and speaking with Commissioner Holder this morning, that's one thing that I've jotted down. What we're going to go back and do is look at the commercial properties that are in every district, and make sure that we can correspond or have a file that corresponds with the zoning on that property. So, that is something that we'll, we certainly will do.
Yeah, I'd like to sit down and take a detailed look at my district, and then also sit down with, with your group to discuss the area as well.
Absolutely.
Sherri, you said you had a notebook where you had put all the information together, and I, and you wanted to know if I wanted a copy of it, and I, I wouldn't care to have a copy of that, but maybe some, the commission members will take time to sit down and, and look through that between now and whatever time we put this back on the agenda. I don't know that we will have time for everyone to do that between now and tomorrow night.
Right, right. And what I can do is, we have them separated, all of the forms are separated by map numbers, but what we can do is separate those by commissioner districts, and then you'll be able to see the changes that were made specifically in your district. So, we can definitely do that, and we can bring it back next month. We're not under a time crunch. The only thing is, whatever's on the official zoning map today, if someone were to come in, we have to hold them to, they're held by the zoning that we officially adopted back in September. But I don't foresee any critical issues at this point.
So, do we need to table this to a time specific, or just table it for a future meeting date?
Future.
That'd be sufficient?
Future meeting date will be.
Just one question. Nothing on here changes from what is in that Westridge zoning issue that we've had?
No, sir. It is currently still Zone PD.
It's still the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Would someone care to offer up a motion?
Absolutely.
Motion to table by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're moving on to our public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting, and all persons wishing to speak for public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. And at this time, we have one citizen who has signed up for public comment, and that's Mr. Steve Richardson of two zero seven Wind Drive in Hampton, and he would like to speak to us this morning about the county wrecker ordinance. Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am. Appreciate y'all's time. I'm just trying to get clarification. I've sent several emails. This is a county issue, so I'm not understanding why we can't have time to sit here and talk about this and, and figure out where we're going with these ordinances. In April, April of oh eight, y'all adopted an ordinance after five years of effort to build it, and we're not following that ordinance. In October of ten, I'm sorry, let me backtrack to oh nine. I specifically sent an ORA to ask if there was, if this was in agreements and ordinance and all, and I was told it was not.
See, if you look down on this website, I don't think it's been.
So, I'm just trying to get some clarification of where we're going with this, what we're going to do. I mean, because there was five years of effort spent on this, and no one's doing anything. Yet, I keep hearing we're, we're done nothing wrong, or, or that there's no issues with it, or, or... I mean, this, this is a county issue, why, you know?
Mr. Sanders, I believe you had some comments you wanted to share related to this issue.
I do. I, I've, Steve will tell you, I've spoken to him on several occasions, and I think it's only been in the last few weeks, Steve, that you've been issued a business license for your facility on Daley's Mill.
Yes, sir. This, the, the issue is not Wrecker one. I don't own Wrecker one. Let me make that clear. My issue is, is the county, Rob McNoggy called that meeting in oh three. Now, here we stand, eight years, a month, and a week later, still going through the same stuff. Now, I've got all kind of paperwork in between them years, going back and forth with this county. I've got recordings where this was set in at the county attorney's desk last October. Now, by my count, it's the end of April, and we still ain't, we're not doing nothing.
We...
Whether, whether y'all give this, the wrecker service to Wrecker one, or Peter Pan, or whoever, the, the bottom line is, is we're not following the rules. And Mr. Holder, you said yourself several times up here, you don't even follow your own rules. That's all I'm asking. What are the rules so we can play the game? If, if you're going to put the rules out there and change them as we go, no one can play the game properly.
We have an ordinance which is, is being looked at. The wrecker committee has met several times in an attempt to apply it fairly to all interested companies and qualified companies in the county. We continue to do that. I do have a redraft of the ordinance, which I think fits our needs better when it comes to wrecker services. I have called for a wrecker service, wrecker committee meeting this week to review both Wrecker one, as well as the status of other potentially qualifying companies under the current ordinance. The, the committee will have a recommendation, will come back. I'm also asking that, I've spoken to our county attorney, we're going to talk about the proposed changes that, in the ordinance, as I said, which will fit our needs in a better way. I apologize to, if Steve feels like he has been delayed and, and pushed back, he is, his particular situation has been kind of difficult. We are, we are reviewing all those who qualify or would qualify and may qualify under our current ordinance.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
No, ma'am, it doesn't. And we, we've been doing this, this ordinance expired April eighteenth of last year. I mean, in October, I was told it was the county attorney's office. I mean, it's six, seven, eight months later now, we're still square one. My thing is, it took five years. Everybody sat on the sideline for five years and waited for Mike Turner, Rob McNoggy, and everybody to get it together. When they finally got together, they didn't do an RFP, they didn't do nothing, they just handed it out to, to the two that were on the, that were already there. There's been no fairness, no equity whatsoever, equality, whatever, in this, in this whole process. And it's not his fault. It started with Rob McNoggy.
I can't speak to the history. We have been trying to interpret the ordinance, qualify those under the ordinance who would be qualified, and we're looking ahead to the future for what our, what our needs truly are. The wrecker committee has met. I know they met last year, at the, towards the end of last year, both with Steve and, other folks who submitted applications. It is not an easy process. It's, it's very complex. That's one of the reasons why we're looking at, at updating and changing the ordinance, making it a little, a little easier, and as I said, one that fits our needs better. I, once again, I apologize to Steve if he feels like he has been delayed or not had their application attended to. We are working on it.
And when do you anticipate bringing it before the board?
We, we, if we can meet later this week, when Mr. Ash gets into town, we can come back at the next meeting.
Is this something that needs to be held during an evening meeting versus a morning meeting?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So, you hope within, by the next, not tomorrow night, but the next meeting, you should have something ready to go to the board?
Sure.
All right. Does that answer your question, Mr. Richardson?
No, ma'am, it doesn't.
If we, if we're able to get this on the agenda in two weeks, I think that's going to resolve the concern you had.
Well, ma'am, I'm not going to sit here and go tit-for-tat with everybody, but the meeting that was held was back in June. According to the ordinance, it's supposed to have been held prior to April of last year. If we're going to change the ordinance every two years, you know, the, the, the bottom line is, is we can't, we as a private sector can't follow the rules if you're not going to follow the rules.
Mr. Richardson...
We don't know how to, how to play the game if you're not going to set the rules for the game.
Mr. Richardson, this isn't, is going to be a change in an ordinance. We cannot hear a change in the ordinance tomorrow because it has not been advertised under the requirements for the county. If the county manager brings this back to us in two weeks, we can advertise this for a public hearing, which it must be. That is the earliest that we will be able to amend the ordinance.
I don't have a problem with that. My, my problem is, is that this has been an ordinance, it took five years to get where we're at for this ordinance. It was just handed out, so everybody had to wait two years. We waited the two years, that ordinance has been expired for over a year now.
And we're going to correct this in two weeks when we can advertise it at a public meeting.
Okay.
And we appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and we, we will take care of it.
Ma'am, listen, I've brought your attention for a long time. I've got emails, I've got all kind of recordings. We've known this has been an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And Mr. Sanders, we'll look for that at the next meeting.
You will have a recommendation on the current ordinance, and we will also submit to the county attorney for review a recommended, a change in the ordinance.
Okay. And I would also suggest that you meet with each individual commissioner in advance, so any questions or concerns can also be answered prior to that meeting, so that we can get this taken care of, and we can move on to other things.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
That's it?
Yes, sir, that's it. Thank you. Do you have any comments for a public session, Mr. Sanders?
I do. I guess, due to my status as the new kid on the block, I bring before you to enter into the record an annexation request from one of our cities, which is Stockbridge. As you well know, given state code, we do not have a lot of input into such annexations, but we do know that the staff has reviewed Stockbridge's request. It is for a commercial area at the intersection of Rock Quarry and Eagles Landing. The, the report is, there are currently no county facilities located on the subject property. There are no current transportation plans, which would require additional right-of-way on the subject property. The current zoning on this property is C-three, and the future land use map identifies this area as future commercial, and there's no county property located within the subject annexation, just for the record.
Okay. I know this is not something we have to take action on. It's my understanding that the city of Stockbridge plans to use this for a pocket park, something to beautify that particular corner as a gateway into the city, and that would certainly, certainly look a lot better than a vacant corner sitting there at Eagles Landing Parkway.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. County Attorney, anything for public session? Upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, Tuesday, April the nineteenth at six thirty p.m., we have a regular meeting. Thursday, April twenty-first at four p.m., we have a joint-called meeting with the Henry County Development Authority and the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority that will be held here at the administration building at one forty Henry Parkway. Friday, April the twenty-second, all county offices will be closed for an official county holiday, and Monday, April twenty-fifth, all county offices will be closed for a furlough day. Monday, May second at nine a.m., we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, May the third at nine a.m., we have a regular board meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel matters, and land acquisition. Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. I need a motion to reconvene back into public session. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Oletta, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and a resolution pertaining to executive session.
Salute.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. At this time, I believe we need to amend the agenda out of public necessity. Mr. Bowman?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. We need to amend the agenda for two separate motions, one being a resolution to authorize the acquisition of one dot six eight one acres of right-of-way more or less in Landlot thirty-six of the twelfth district, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA, section thirty-two dash three dash four through section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
And we have a motion by Mr. Bowman to amend the agenda and to approve the resolution that he just read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. And the next item?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Number two would be a resolution to authorize the acquisition of seven point six five eight acres of right-of-way more or less, and point, point eight four one acres of permanent easement more or less, and point six two nine acres of temporary easement more or less in Landlot thirty-six of the twelfth district, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant provisions of OCGA, section thirty-two dash three dash four through section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
And we have a motion for approval of a resolution by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. We stand adjourned.[1789.65]